Mr. Tollis, if you want to go over the quarter three goals.
Yes, sir. Council members, if you look at your work session agenda, Q3 goals. Parks and Rec Maintenance Facility is still on track to be completed this quarter. Rucker Boulevard Redevelopment Meeting, that was complete. City Hall is complete. Phase five street resurfacing, complete. Selecting budget for Phase six street resurfacing, library study. And there's one other on here, PCI study. Those are being put into the budget, which should be on your next council meeting agenda. So if you approve that, those will be complete. Quarterly updates on customer service and nuisance properties, those are set for the second meeting in September during the work session. Coppinville Agreement is still with Enterprise City Schools. Soccer Complex is complete. Weida Street Park Improvement is complete. Funding for the engineering for the Southern Bypass is complete. I think you heard at the last meeting that we're on our way to 30% on those construction plans. Airport County Road 606 relocation. I put "complete" because there's no other action that we can take at this point. So you'll have an action on the agenda tonight, assuming you approve that. That's the last action that can be taken from the city side. After that, it becomes the ALDOT and county project. Outdoor Fitness Center is complete. Atrip Project for Shellfield, that project, as I said at the last meeting, is delayed, but materials should be here and it should be started in October. Complete on the Enterprise State Workforce Development Center, Danny Long gave you an update at our budget meeting. Main Street Lighting Project, that materials are on ground. Barry Mott says that that'll be complete by the end of September. If you recall, it's about 130 some odd lights that we're going to change out the bulbs on downtown. We're going to do that work in-house. Phase one Wayfinding Project is with ALDOT for review. Rucker Boulevard Connectivity Discussion. There's a... That's incorrect. There's a meeting for Rucker Boulevard scheduled September 3rd with the Executive Committee with the mayor and some KPS, Jason Fandrin, who's doing the work on that on September 3rd, which is tomorrow. Kind of get some feedback. What they did is they... KPS has reached out to people from the Chamber, other business owners that were at the first meeting, police chief, school superintendent. And so we're going to get a report back on what the progress is so far. So when we get that, I'll send it out to you. But that, again, that's probably a six-month-long project. It's just kind of a... An update on where we're at to date. Report on staff from Railroad Right-Away Maintenance, complete. Daleville Avenue, complete. 167 Salem Update is complete. I sent you all kind of a matrix that ALDOT is starting to provide us on a monthly basis on those projects. So as I get those, I'll continue to forward them out to the council. But that project should be ongoing right now. I hope they finish in the next few months. Green space, if you'll look in your packets, you'll see a stapled packet of four concepts that KPS, who did our comprehensive plan, kind of did a deeper dive under what that space that old Junior was sitting on, on College Street. What might be some potential uses that would fit in with what our comprehensive plan suggests. So if you'll look, it's got pros and cons on that. Everything from single-family lots, mini-park, library, neighborhood park. So if you could just look at that and then tell me if there's an appetite from the council at some point over the weeks ahead, what your opinion might be is to, you know, if we were to pick one of those, which one would you like us to focus on? Councilman Goolsby, does that meet what you were kind of looking for?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay. And that's our quarter three updates. And then at the next council meeting, that'll conclude third quarter. And then if any of those don't get addressed, we'll bump them to the fourth quarter.
Anybody have any questions? All right. We'll move on to reviewing the agenda. We will begin our official council meeting at 12:00 PM today. Roll call, opening prayer, and Pledge of Allegiance. Then the approval of the agenda. Then we have the consideration of the consent agenda. We have accounts payable in the amount of $1,312,296.83. We have contract billings for Barge Design Solutions of $63,836. That includes $49,323.20 contract services for airport life flight hangar. And then there is $4,513 for contract services for WWTF upgrades. And then $10,000 contract administrative services for the CDBG demo project. And then we will canvass the municipal election. And part of that, we'll have to go through provisional ballots. And then we will review and consider resolution of canvas of votes for the office of the mayor. We'll do that again for District Two, District Four, and District Five. And then we will have a mayoral proclamation for Senior Center Month, declaring September 2025 a Senior Center Month in the City of Enterprise. Then we'll open the floor for privilege of the floor. Y'all stop me if there's anything y'all want to talk about as we go through this. Old business, we have some public hearings. Three separate public hearings here for the Frank Shannon Rezone. One rezones 83 acres of land. The next one provides for the annexation and zoning of 13.71 acres of land. And the next one providing for annexation and zoning of 17.9 acres of land. Do we have... Was this a recommendation from the Staff and Planning Commission to pass or to not?
Counsel, the... All three agenda items are recommended from Staff and Planning Commission to approve.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about any of this right now? All right, thank you. Then we'll move into new business. We'll introduce ordinance, established designated business parking permit program. I know we've discussed this before, but Mr. Tollis, if you want to fill us in on this.
Council members, if you recall, I think it was maybe a month or so ago, we had some calls into the mayor's office about a business downtown who, you know, we certainly appreciated moving in, but they started posting some signage up about towing in some lots that they own, and nothing wrong with that. But it had previously just been, I guess, parking for anyone in the downtown area without restriction. And so because the use of that facility had changed, I started looking at some ways that we might explore, allowing businesses that didn't have their own dedicated parking on city streets to have the ability to get a permitted spot. So how the business utilizes that spot, if they do apply for a permit, it might be for their customers, it might be for their employees, and you might have different uses. So a law office, for instance, might want to use it for themselves because they're in and out of there. But somebody like a restaurant might want to-go parking for customers to come in and pick up an order that they did online. And so I asked our city attorney to look at some permit policies from cities across the state. This is the one that we came up with that you'll see before you, but essentially allows businesses that are in good standing, so they have their business license, they don't owe taxes or anything like that, and that they've got no other outstanding issues with their facility itself from code enforcement to be able to apply for on-street permit along College Street Corridor. And, you know, obviously, this would be good for a year, but if this, you know, particular program is unsuccessful, or it is successful, we can either take it back and eliminate it, or we can turn around and expand it to other areas if there is a need. But along that College Street Corridor with the old Regions Building, that has become a problem for some of the business owners there during certain times. This permit would be allow the business to have parking from 7:30 to, I think, 4:30 during the Monday through Friday, and then it would be public parking for anyone outside of those hours.
Any questions on this?
Are you... Did they have to suspend the rules? Is that necessary for the rule?
It's not necessary, but if... Just thought it would be something if you wanted to consider doing, you can. And that's for anything. If you'd like to suspend the rules, if not, lay it over. There's nothing urgent about this. But we have had a lot of calls or concerns about, from businesses along in that general area, from the library over to maybe like par and poor, about where their customers can park.
If there's no urgency on it, I would make a recommendation we hold it over like our tradition has been, to give the public an opportunity.
I agree.
Any other questions? All right. Then we will review and consider Resolution 090225-D, Declaration of Election for Council Member District Two. And then review and consider Resolution 090225-E, Declaration of Election for Council Member District Four. And review and consider Resolution 090225-F, Declaration of Election, Council Member District And then we're going to review and consider Resolution 090225-G for Accept Donation of Real Property ID Board. Speak to that.
Sure. So at the last meeting, we talked about the property, Warren Field, Donaldson Park area, the tennis courts that are, if you look now at a parcel map, those particular parcels actually have our baseball fields, tennis courts in the Donaldson Park area on them, but they're owned... Those parcels are owned by the ID Board. And as such, they're zoned M2. The ID Board met last week and agreed to deed that property to the city. They have no intention to build anything on that or try to sell it. And in all likelihood, was probably a clerical error or something didn't get recorded 30 or 40 years ago whenever those facilities were built out there. There are portions of that complex at Donaldson Park that are owned by the city. It's just these two, technically three parcels that were not deeded to the city, for whatever reason. But the ID Board has agreed to do that. If the council would like to accept that, our intention would be to rezone, or petition you to rezone that institutional from M2.
All right. Then we will review and consider Resolution 090225-H, Application for Funding Assistance, FY 2026 Airport Improvements.
Yes, sir. So this is a typical, this time every year, we come to this body and ask for permission to apply for, they call it pre-application, to apply for money for next year for the airport improvement projects. Of course, we've started on relocating County Road 606 currently under existing grant that we're expected to receive any day. But this will be for the next year's cycle, so they ask us to do pre-application with resolutions, so that's why you have it before you. There is no, at this time, there's no project, there's no grant. This is just a pre-application to apply for money and getting your permission to do so.
Okay. And then we will authorize the mayor to execute a real agreement with Sarkoia Nutrition and Transportation Programs. I'm assuming this is something we do every year. Anybody have any?
Good afternoon. Yes, sir. This is something that we do every year. We bring this agreement in front of you, just because it does take mayor authorizing to sign it, so we just need you to authorize him, giving him the ability to execute the agreement. But this is something you guys have done previously annually.
Okay. And what... This Nutrition and Transportation Program, what is... What all is involved in this? Just...
Yeah. Some we do annually with the senior center in the back with the food and meal prep and all that.
Well, I guess my question was, what does this provide for them? And just to... Is it...
There's daily... I don't know where Birgit is. She's... Birgit's better able to answer this, but it does provide daily meals.
Okay.
In the back. And then there's like the transportation vehicles to get them here and to various events.
Okay. That's what I thought this was. I just wanted to make sure that that's what we were actually voting on.
It is. They serve meals actually here in the back in the senior center. They serve meals here every day, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then we have a request for permission to seek bids for Enterprise Rescue Life Flight Hangar. Mr. Mott?
Yes, sir. So you've executed a contract with Barge Design, our engineers for the airport, and the city was in receipt of a $500,000 grant towards this project. So looking back through my files, I didn't see where we had come to this body asking permission to actually go to bids for it, even though we've accepted the grant, executed the contract, and the next logical thing would be to go to bids. We did have a meeting with the engineer last week going through 90% set of plans, so we're down to just finalizing the set of plans and starting advertising. So coming to you today to ask permission to go to bids, and then once those bids are received, then we'll bring it back to this body. The agreement that we had in place with Enterprise Rescue and PHI was that anything above the half million dollars in the grant would be their responsibility to work out a funding arrangement with the city to coverage anything, cover anything over the half a million that the grant did not cover.
All right. And now we will, after that, we will recess our regular session and convene into an E911 board meeting. And in that meeting, we will review the minutes, approve accounts payable, and adjourn. You've got something, okay?
Yes, about the 911 board.
Gotcha.
Good morning. So there was an email sent to the board, the 911 board, stating that we have opportunity to change Bird Street, B-I-R-D, and B-Y-R-D since there are no homes on Bird Street, B-I-R-D. So I have contacted the homeowners and allowed them to make suggestions, and they have made suggestions and sent them back to us. The name that we've come up with would be Elijah Dewey Way. Elijah was one of the homeowners. He was a World War II vet. And the Dewey was an uncle that was, that had lived there for the duration of his life. And the owners wanted to see if the council or the 911 board would consider those names for the names of the name of the road, Bird, B-I-R-D Road. So.
Yeah. I'm familiar with Bird Street off of West College. Where's the other Bird Street located?
The Bird Street, B-Y-R-D, is off College Street. The B-I-R-D is off of, is Daleville Avenue, right between, I think it's, I think it's Dale. And I have that information. Hold on one moment. It's off of Bird Street in between, oh, Grubbs and Searcy. So.
Thank you.
And it doesn't have to be voted on today. I just wanted to put that before my board so that we can come up with approval for
Okay. What is the process to make that happen? I don't... I haven't been involved in renaming a street yet.
Usually, we go before the board, the 911 board, and we'll get the, I think, the, our lawyer, our attorney, to make sure that we do some type of resolution. So if there's any questions, we can have that written.
Okay. So the only action that we'll be taking in the meeting this afternoon is the, just authorizing you guys to go to the attorney to get that process started?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't actually have a resolution then?
Right.
Okay.
Just bringing it to your attention.
Gotcha. All right.
And the reason why we're doing this is to keep the confusion down with the two steps.
That's correct. According to the City of Enterprise Guidelines for the Addressing and Standards for 911, we can't have two street names spelled or sounding the same. And Bird and Bird just happens to be that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then we will adjourn that meeting and go back and reconvene into our regular And then have the mayor's report and council member comments and adjourn. So... Another agenda back over here. All right. So we have a request from Mr. Tollis and our city attorney for executive session for good name and character.
Yes, sir. And I wanted to inform you that the senior center's in use because of the time of day. We usually have it in the evening. So we have the Witt Armstrong Room opened up down the hall for executive session.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Move to go into executive session.
Second motion.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. We'll go into executive session, and when we come back, we expect to not have any further business except adjourn to regular meeting.
Oh, she falls?
Yes.
Oh, hey, June. What's she saying?
Ellen Catley's being this adult. She says I'm so bad, she says.
Three years to be a good age, isn't it? Oh, she thinks it was gonna be an announcement? Like how? To who, Mama? Huh, were you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful, wonderful day. Thank you for being with our city, be with our officials, and be with our city staff as we go through this presentation today, as we go through this council meeting, oh Lord, be with us, guide us, and be, be with all our citizens around our town, oh Lord, be with each family out there, you know the needs and wants, and Lord, we ask your blessings on everyone today, be with us and guide us, and give us fair wins, in your heavenly name we pray, amen.
Do you want me to pray? Do a prayer? Yeah, but do a quick, quick prayer. If, if nobody do it, I, I'm here, so. For Mary. Gray, you can do it, and you be just right there at the mic. So you can do it, you right there at the mic.
All right, we're going to start with our meeting, let's, let the record show that all members of the council are present, and we'll begin with our opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, and, uh, do we have a, someone here? All right, we'll ask Councilman Scotty Johnson to lead us in prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful, wonderful day, thank you for being with our city, be with our officials, and be with our city staff as we go through this presentation today, as we go through this council meeting, oh Lord, be with us, guide us, and be, be with all our citizens around our town, oh Lord, be with each family out there, you know the needs and wants, and Lord, we ask your blessings on everyone today, be with us and guide us, and give us fair wins, in your heavenly name we pray, amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
All right, call for a motion to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted, but I do think we're gonna have a, an addition to this, do we have that yet? Do we have that motion yet? Okay. Okay, we're gonna have an addition to this, uh... I want to, um, have a, a call for motion to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted with an addition of a, uh, motion to fill the vacancy of City Council position number five.
Okay, I move to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted with the addition of, uh, moving to fill the vacancy for District Five.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, and we consider a consideration of a consent agenda, all matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the council for review, are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion of the city council with no separate discussion, if separate discussion is desired on an item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request of a member of the city council, a call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, and we consider a consideration of a consent agenda, all matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the council for review, are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion of the city council with no separate discussion, if separate discussion is desired on an item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request of a member of the city council, a call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, now I call for the canvassing of the 2025 municipal election, and induce, and we'll introduce and call consideration the following resolutions, and I believe before we get started with these resolutions, we have some provisional ballots here that we have to go through. Start with District One.
So what just happened?
Call the name? Did he say we called him?
No.
What's the next one?
I don't deal with the mayor.
Well, it was rejected. All, uh, was accepted? 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 Accepted. All right, so we have the accepted provisional ballots for District One. Council, you have on your, uh, agenda blank section there if you all wanna fill these in. So provisional ballot, uh, the first one is a vote in, uh, for Mayor William Cooper. Very well sealed up here. Thank you. The second one is, uh, for Mayor Lister Reeves. Third is for Mayor William Cooper. And the fourth for District One is also Mayor William Cooper, so provisional ballots, we have three for William Cooper and one for Lister Reeves for District One. All right, you got District Two open? Accepted? Accepted. 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 Do you have another reading?
Yeah.
Accepted and accepted. That is rejected. Accepted. Accepted. Rejected. 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 Accepted. Accepted. All right, I don't have to read these numbers. Accepted. Rejected. Accepted. And accepted. All right, we got a lot of them here. All right, provisional, uh, District Two, Mayor William Cooper and City Council Casey Mack. Accepted provisional ballot, uh, Mayor Lister Reeves, District Two, Casey Mack. Absolutely. Speed this process up here. Accepted District Two, William Cooper, Casey Mack. Accepted William Cooper, Kenneth LeBlanc. Accepted Mayor Lister Reeves, City Council District Two, Casey Mack. Accepted District Two, Mayor Lister Reeves, City Council District Two, Kenneth LeBlanc. Accepted Mayor William E. Cooper, District Two Council Kenneth LeBlanc. Accepted District Two, William Cooper for Mayor, Kenneth LeBlanc, City Council. Accepted District Two, William Cooper, City Council Kenneth LeBlanc. Accepted District Two, Mayor William Cooper, City Council Kenneth LeBlanc. Accepted District Two, William Cooper, Kenneth LeBlanc. Accepted District Two, William Cooper, Kenneth LeBlanc. All right, District Three. Accepted. Accepted. Rejected. Accepted. 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 All right, District Three, accepted for Mayor, William Cooper. Mayor William Cooper. Mayor Lister Reeves. Mayor Lister Reeves. Mayor Bill Baker. Mayor William Cooper. Mayor Bill Baker. And Mayor William Cooper. That's all of District Three. District Four. Rejected. Accepted. Rejected. Rejected. And rejected. Is that the only accepted one? All right, accepted District Four, Mayor William Cooper, City Council District Four, Adair Lee. All right, District Five. Absentee? Okay. Oh, there we go. Yeah, rejected. All right, and that's rejected. The absentee was rejected, but, yeah, this is, um... Is that another District Five? This is, this is the only one that's in the District Five box. Is it, it's not on my list? Okay. So, did you tally those as I read them, or?
I did.
You did?
I did for, up to D one, I mean, D four. Did you have any for five?
Those were all rejected.
You want me to give them to you?
Yeah, well, so, if, um, Beverly did too, so as long, as long as they match, I guess we're good then, right? All right.
We'll take it from the clutch.
Okay. All right, you wanna give us your totals down there, provision? So, guess I need a calculator here. So Sonya, um, did you have on, on the mayor, just verifying the numbers here, Bill Baker, two? For mayor?
Yes.
Um, William Cooper, seventeen?
Yes.
And Lister Reeves, six?
Yes.
The update, the updates are grand total on Bill Baker to one thousand one hundred and seventy. William Cooper, one thousand nine hundred and twenty. Richard Moore, thirty-three. And Lister Reeves, eight hundred and twenty-two. All right, so we'll start here with the Office of the Mayor. I introduce and call for consideration of Resolution 090225, providing for the canvassing of votes for the municipal election held August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five for the Office of Mayor. The result of the election is as, as follows. For Mayor, Bill Baker, district totals one thousand one hundred and thirty-one, absentee totals thirty-seven, provisional totals two, grand total one thousand one hundred and seventy. William E. Bill Cooper, district totals one thousand eight hundred and twenty-three, absentee totals eighty, provisional total seventeen, grand totals one thousand nine hundred and twenty. Richard Moore, district totals thirty-three, absentee totals zero, provisional totals zero, grand totals thirty-three. Lister H. Reeves, Jr., district total seven hundred and ninety-two, absentee totals twenty-four, provisional total six, grand total eight hundred and twenty-two. Resolution 090225 further provides for the call off of, call of a runoff election between Bill Baker and William E. Bill Cooper to be held September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five as no candidate received a majority of the votes cast. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 090225.
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Review and consider Resolution, Resolution 090225A, Canvas of Votes District Two. Introduce and call for the consideration of Resolution 090225A, providing for the canvassing of votes for the municipal election held August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five for the Office of Councilmember District Two, with the majority of the votes cast in favor of Casey Mack as follows. Kenneth M. LeBlanc, machine totals four hundred and forty, absentee totals eighty, excuse me, eight, provisional totals eight, and grand totals four hundred and fifty-six. Casey Mack, machine totals six hundred and fourteen, absentee totals nineteen, provisional totals four, for grand total six hundred and thirty-seven. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 090225A.
Second.
All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now we'll review and consider- Now we'll review and consider Resolution 09-0225B, Canvas of Votes, District Four. Introduce and call for consideration of Resolution 09-0225B, providing for the canvassing of votes for municipal election held August 26, 2025, for the Office of City Councilmember, District Four, with the majority of votes cast in favor of Scotty Johnson as follows. Machine totals four-hundred-and-eighty, absentee totals seventeen, provisional totals two, for grand total of four-hundred-and-ninety-nine. Adair Lee, machine totals one-hundred-and-fifty-eight, absentee totals seven, provisional totals one, for one-hundred-and-sixty-six. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 09-0225B.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Review and consider Resolution 09-0225C, Canvas of Votes, District Five. Introduce and call for consideration of Resolution 09-0225C, providing for the canvassing of votes for municipal election held August 26, 2025, for the Office of Councilmember, District Five, with the majority of votes cast in favor of Todd Walls as follows. Todd Boland, machine totals three-hundred-and-ninety-two, absentee totals ten, grand total four-oh-two. Todd Walls, machine totals four-twenty-two, absentee totals eleven, for grand total of four-thirty-three. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 09-0225C.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alright, motion carries. Mayor, I believe you have a proclamation at this time?
As Director of Community Services and Recreation, I have the honor of reading a proclamation from Mayor William E. Cooper, recognizing September as Senior Citizen, Senior Center Month in the City of Enterprise. Whereas senior centers across our nation and right here in Enterprise provide vital services that enhance the health, well-being, independence, social connection, creativity, and quality of life for older adults. And whereas, according to the National Council on Aging, senior centers serve more than one million older adults daily, offering support that ranges from meals and social engagement to mental health and digital access. And whereas, since their inclusion in the Older Americans Act of 1973, senior centers have evolved into dynamic, community-centered organizations responsive to changing needs. And whereas, the NCOA's 2025 theme for National Senior Center Month is "Powering Possibilities: Flip the Script", an initiative community to challenge stereotypes about aging and celebrate how senior centers foster creativity, purpose, resilience, and connection in later life. And whereas, the Enterprise Senior Center exemplifies the mission by providing congregant and home-delivered meals, wellness and reception programs, educational and social opportunities, meaningful engagement, and personal growth for our senior population. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Blake. Now, therefore, I, William E. Cooper, Senior, Mayor of the City of Enterprise, Alabama, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Senior Center Month in the City of Enterprise. And I urge all citizens to commit to supporting and celebrating the vile work of our senior center and bolstering the sense of inclusion, purpose, vitality among our oldest citizens. Our citizens are treasure of part of our community. They bring wisdom, experience, and a spirit of service that enriches Enterprise each and every day. Enterprise Senior Center provides vital programs, activities, and resources that support their well-being and help keep them connected. We are proud to celebrate the important role of our seniors, and we are especially honored to have some of our senior center members here with us today. I will now sign the proclamation.
At this time, I'd ask Birgit Briggs, who's over our Senior Center, and all the seniors to come up front for a picture as the mayor presents this proclamation.
Hold on one second. Alright, we are ready. Flash. Oh, get in there. Good job, girl. Scooch in. And if I stole your paper?
Let's go down.
Oh, we can go back to our room?
Yeah, we can go back in our room. So, door, door, door.
And where did I get that?
Yeah, I'm gonna go over, I guess, either way. Russell?
So, we have an addition to our agenda tonight, today. So, used to be a night, today. I move to formally declare a vacancy in District Five of Enterprise City Council, which was created when Turner Townsend resigned, effective August 31, 2025. With that, I open the floor to nominations for council to nominate someone to fill that vacancy until the end of the current term. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Todd Walts to fill the vacancy in District Five for the remainder of the term.
My second.
Any more? Any other nominations? Alright, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that Todd Walts fill the vacancy in District Five for the remainder of the term.
Second.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Alright, now is the time of the privilege of the floor. This is the part of the meeting where anyone in attendance today who wishes to address the council may do so for three minutes. If there is a public hearing on the agenda for the topic you're concerned with, please wait until that public hearing opens to address the council. If they choose, staff, mayor, and council will respond to your comments during the appointed times later in the meeting. Repetitive, disruptive, and disparaging comments will not be tolerated. If you're found out of order, your privileges can and will be revoked. Does anyone, and we do have some public hearings on the agenda today, so does anyone wish to address the council at this time about something not to do with a public hearing? Alright, state your name.
Russell Hobart.
Alright.
I would like to, I don't know how to do this or anything, but I just have a problem with neighbors, and I've texted on the site to the mayor. I have spoke with an engineer. He said they've been out, checked them out. And that was the reason, I don't know if y'all heard it, that I played the rooster, because they are not allowed in city, by my understanding, of looking up and reading the ordinances, and several others, that these people do not, they believe they're above. They have an outdoor pit that they burn. They have a pile of rubbish against their house so that they're prepared to burn whenever they feel like it. Usually when I leave, so that I don't call in. And, but they have a ton of chickens, several roosters, ducks. I also believe, I have no proof, but I believe that she's running a puppy mill out of her porch. And nobody seems to address, I don't know how to get past what I have done. You know, I have spoken out about it and tried to reach out. The citizens have no, I have no legal authority to enforce anything on my own. I'm well able, should it come to that. I don't want it to come to that, because first of all, you know, and foremost, I'm a Christian, so, but I live with that every day. And, you know, and in this, in the presentation about the seniors, about a better way of life, I sit at home all the time. And I listen to those ducks and roosters squawking, crowing all the time, all day long, at night, and the puppies barking. And, and I just wanted to know, I don't know, for privacy issues, if I'm allowed to give out the residence address of the problem.
We would like your address, sir.
That's fine with me.
If you wouldn't mind providing that.
I live at 202 Thompson Street, and Tent City is right behind me in my back lawn. They're attached to the fence, they're too close to the houses. There's several violations of ordinances going on. And I, and my other issue is, and I have approached this, and I assume it's for lack of budget resources, but why do you not have animal control patrolling at night? That's when most of the strays are out running around. And I have that problem also, as well as the whole neighborhood does. But, and, you know, I want to commend, you know, all that you guys are doing. I'm new to town, I've only lived here a year. But sadly, they moved in right after, I did, a few months after, and I tried to tell them that, hey, if you put your brush by the road, the city will take it. And they, my, their answer was, we like to burn. And I'm like, but, you know, I get nowhere, it's trying to be nice. The police had been to my house one time, because they have a big dog. And I felt the need, where she was just standing out there watching the dog on the fence like this, at paws on the top of the fence. And this is the dog that she's breeding. And I felt the need, because she was standing off to the side, just like this, not controlling the dog. It's her property, I can't make her. But I put out my gun, because I'm not gonna be attacked when the dog, when I turn my back, mowing. And then she called the police on me. And I explained, and I felt intimidated by the dog, it's a big dog. Police even agreed with me. But, that's all I got to say. If you, you know, if you can help out there, and I appreciate it. You know, feel free to get in touch, feel free to come out. I've got pictures, I've got run, they've made their lawn. It was a nice lawn. They've depreciated property value, because the whole area is nothing but dirt, where the chickens and ducks and everything have, you know, decimated it. And now it all runs off on my lawn.
What's your last name? I heard Ross and...
Hobart, H-O-B-A-R-T.
Thank you.
And if there's, if there's any other questions, you know, I believe I've taken my time. If there's not any other questions, I'll let you guys be, somebody else can have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who wants to take privilege of the floor? Alright, do you want to have any staff reports?
Council Mayor, I just wanted to give you a quick update. We, after several months of ordering the, the streetlights for downtown, they did come in last week. So, at least we've got about half of them that are in, in-house. So, they were delivered to Mill Avenue, over at our shop, and we have started installing those today. So, we're trying to figure out the best way, because we, we want to start down Main Street. We're at Main Street, but we, we also do not want to be a hindrance for people walking up and down and doing shopping. So, we're trying to determine the best way of doing this, whether we do it after hours, or we do it very early in the morning. But I just want to let you know, and let anybody watching online in the public know, that we will be doing that install, starting effectively today, and moving forward. And, and our goal was to have those completed by the end of the month, by the end of third quarter. So, we're still on task to do that. And I just want to let you know that part of our progress downtown is we replace those lights, but I'm, I'm real excited to have those things. It'll be, it'll be a lot nicer, a lot brighter, and a lot safer.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any, any other staff reports? Alright, we'll move into old business. We have a public hearing and consideration of ordinance 08-0525. Call for a public hearing prior to consideration of ordinance 08-0525, providing for the rezoning of eighty-three acres of land owned by Stephen Howard Franks and Randy Frank Shannon from AG Agricultural District to R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District, located on County Road 700, near the intersection of Alabama 27. So, this is a public hearing during a regular council meeting of the Enterprise City Council. We are here to conduct business in an orderly manner. We expect the attendees to respect the proceedings. One person will speak at a time. Please give the person who is speaking the same courtesy you expect when it's your time to speak. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. If you're recognized by me to speak, please come forward and speak directly into the microphone. Make sure your all comments are directed at the council, as we will be the ones making the decision. Under no circumstances should comments be directed to anyone other than the council. Please attempt to refrain from repeating the same points have previously been made so far to keep proceedings as efficient as possible. After the hearing is closed and council deliberations begin, there will be no more comments from the audience. So, I'd like to ask the applicants to present the project and address any known concerns if they are here. If they are not, alright, so, staff, do you have any information about this project you'd like to give us?
Counsel, so the recommendations, there's three of them here. The reason for that is there's, it's all one piece of property, but the city limits lines cut it into three pieces. That's the reason why there's three different agenda items, and you have two annexations on the, the map, just to kind of give you some clarification on that. But it is one piece of property. There were some concerns that were brought up by the neighboring communities that will be addressed during the construction phase, such as stormwater design, keeping of the natural trees, barriers, buffers, things of that nature. Those will be addressed in design. Besides that... Besides that, the staff and planning commission both recommend approval of these agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the general public that would like to voice their support or opposition to the project or specific concerns that the council should take into consideration? If you'll state your name and address?
Sir, my name is Chris Herman, my address is four twenty County Road seven five four. My property butts up to the, to this project. I presented you guys a copy of our concerns, and I'm not going to really concern myself with concern number one because that's already been addressed at the, the last planning council. But I will address concern number two, which is the stormwater management and flooding. Our argument is the proposed clear cutting of the wooded land in addition of acreage of improvised, impermeable services will drastically increase stormwater runoff, posing a potential flooding and erosion risk to the, to the new and adjacent properties. Analysis from satellite image shows the development area is currently a dense, mature forest. This land has natural sponge absorbing immense amounts of rainwater from surrounding land. The site plan replaces this forest with dozens of roofs, driveways, and over a mile of asphalt roads. This means nearly all rainwater will become immediate runoff while many of our properties are located directly adjacent and at similar elevation with parts of the proposed development. Properties within the proposed development and to the south are likely recipients of the, this excess water. Relevant City of Enterprise Code, the City of Enterprise subdivision regulations mandate that developers provide a storm drainage system as part of the required improvements. The system shall be designed to prevent flooding and damage to onsite, offsite, upstream, downstream properties. Furthermore, these storms drainage systems include storm sewers, drains, catch basins must be designed to handle at least a hundred-year event storm. This hundred-year flood is defined as the flood created by a hundred-year storm event, a storm having a one percent chance of being equaled or exceeded in any given year. Our question to the board, the code explicitly holds the developer responsible for preventing damage to offsite properties. Can the developer engineer demonstrate with data that the proposed stormwater plan can handle a hundred-year storm and will result in zero negative impact to our properties? This, that was presented in front of you, there are several more concerns, but I know that we're limited on time. This was presented or written by Joseph A. Mitchell, he is also a resident in my subdivision, he lives in the same street. He was unable to be here, and I am here to present it on his behalf and also my behalf. Penny, your question, sir?
Okay, so did you have any other concerns that you wanted to, to mention here?
Most of our concerns, for example, the traffic and public safety that was addressed at one of the planning meetings or the recommendation committees. I presented concern number two, which is our site and priorities essence, stormwater and management flooding. Concern three was loss of privacy and property buffers, which I heard the gentleman address, that would be come up in planning. Environmental impact and tree removal is a concern. Neighborhood character and property value preservation is a concern. Concern six would be construction nuances, noise, and hours of construction. Concern seven is the strain on utilities and communication services. Concern eight was the impact on city schools, access for county residents. I believe that was all our concerns, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Staff want to address any of these?
So, a couple of issues, sir. One, this is an annexation and, and setting zoning for part of this, so you have, you have three items on your agenda here. Being in the county, there are no zoning regulations, so the, the fact that you're bringing it in, you're bringing in county property into the city limits and also setting zoning. The city has a whole lot more regulations as far as what's required for, for zoning setbacks, types of use, stormwater regulations, building codes, all those things. So, the fact that the property being brought into the city and falling under our subdivision regulations and zoning regulations has a lot more control over what happens on that piece of property. What you have before you on this first particular item specifically is a rezone, so it's changing the use from one use to another use. The, it's, it's, it's not construction plans, it's not stormwater plans, it's not development plans, it's not even, at this point, the lot layout. It's, it's literally the rezone, the type of use of what the land can be used for, what is currently can be used for, and what it is being proposed to be used for. If, if this body decides to move forward and rezone this from agricultural to, I believe the first one is to R...
R-one.
One, which is the least dense residential zoning that we have available to us. It's the equivalent of the all, the old R-one hundred lots. It is the most, most spacious, the less dense, the less asphalt, the less rooftops that we have available in our residential zoning regulations. If you decide to move forward with rezoning and we do get a plat for this, the stormwater regulations are required by subdivision regulations that a stamped engineer, an engineer will stamp a set of construction drawings and a stormwater plan to show us that after development, the, the flow off the property does not exceed what currently happens now. So, the way they handle that is they collect the stormwater through a series of inlets and pipes, collect it, put it into either a detention or retention pond, and, and store that volume of water for a hundred-year flood event, and only release onto adjacent property owners what they were seeing prior to construction. So, development, this is no different from any development in this city or any other city in the United States. The, the laws in Alabama says you cannot put more water downstream on adjacent property owner after development than you did before the land was developed. And those, those requirements are in place, are in our stormwater regulations, and the developer has to submit to us a set of engineering drawings that has the calculations, what kind of runoff factors, the durations, time of concentration, all those things get submitted to us. And then I personally review every stormwater calculation report that comes in from the developers and their engineers to ensure that they have met the compliance of our stormwater and specifically our subdivision regulations. And I also require, and city requires, that an engineer stamp with their P. stamp on that set of drawings, that they certify that those are true and accurate. As far as the others, utilities and all, and buffers and all, I think all that other was handled, I'm just merely addressing the stormwater issues unless you have any specific questions for me about this, this rezone. But item number one, the sort of, the public hearing that we have is basically to rezone eighty-three acres from agriculture to R-one, and I'm trying to stick just to that one for right now.
Okay, so, just, just to clarify, this, this request is to rezone, any, any plans that would happen, any stormwater issues? And most of the issues been raised here would be taken care of in the planning portion and the engineering, development plans.
Yes, sir, so the, the process is, for anybody that's not familiar behind me or, or watching online, is if, if, if the zoning is correct, there's no reason to go through a rezone. But if the zoning is not proper for a development set of plans, they will go for a rezone first, which sets the use of the product, property. After rezone, they will come back, if it's a subdivision, we'll get a preliminary plat which shows the layout of the roads, the setbacks, the lots, the number of lots, all that. And then we actually get construction drawings after that, which means we'll get grades on the roads, sizes of pipes, stormwater calculations, all the details that will be approved in the, in the construction document phase of the project. And then after all that's done, then a final plat will be done and submitted in. So, at, at this point, all you're asking, all there, all that's being asked for, for this agenda item is to set the zoning from agriculture to R-one. None of the other steps are being asked for at this time, at this, at this juncture, just the rezone for the type of use. Other development plans, preliminary plats and all will have to come after, after you approve or disapprove of, of this rezoning request.
Any questions? Thank you. Any of the council want to speak to anything before we close this hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance oh five, oh eight oh five twenty-five?
I move to adopt ordinance oh eight oh five two five.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We have a public hearing consideration of ordinance oh five, oh eight oh five twenty-five A. Call for a public hearing prior to consideration of ordinance oh eight oh five twenty-five A, providing for the annexation and zoning of thirteen point seven one acres of land owned by Stephen Howard Franks and Randy Frank Shannon into the city limits and to establish zoning of R-one, low-density, single-family residential district. The hearing is now open. Staff, did you have anything to mention about this one?
Yes, sir, so this one actually is a annexation, so actually bringing property in from the county into the city limits and then setting zoning for that property. So, the recommendation or the request was to change or establish zoning as R-one, which is the most rural residential zoning that we have available to us. And the same concerns as before, as I would stated before, is this is just a rezone at this point. Once we get development plans or preliminary plat, we'll address stormwater issues and all that stuff at a later date, once those plans are submitted to us for review. At this time, I do not have any of those requests from the developer. This is just a rezone, or basically annexation and set zoning, since it does not currently have a zoning because it's in the county.
All right, thank you. Any members of the general public to voice their support or opposition? All right, seeing none, we will close this public hearing. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance oh five, oh eight oh five twenty-five A?
I move to adopt ordinance oh eight oh five two five A.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Call for a public hearing prior to consideration of ordinance oh eight oh five twenty-five B, providing for the annexation and zoning of seventeen point nine nine acres of land owned by Stephen Howard Franks and Randy Frank Shannon into the city limits and to establish zoning of R-one, low-density, single-family residential district. The hearing is now open, Mr. Mott?
The same comments as before, this is annexation and set zoning, same thing, R-one, least rural, I mean, the least dense zoning that we have available, same comments as the last one.
All right, any members of the general public to speak on this one?
Sir, Mr. Herman again, my apologies. I want to apologize for our slight ignorance between me and my other neighbors in our neighborhood. We are not, we are not aware of all the processes and procedures that take place in setting with, between re, rezoning plots and all that stuff. So, we do apologize, our concern and our biggest intent behind what we've written and we've provided to the city council is to ensure that our concerns get at least addressed and at least documented within the process that this is going to take as it moves forward. We understand that, we're not saying no to any of this, we understand that we want to see progress, but we are just concerned about what this all looks like in the end. Penny, your question, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mott, I think you've already spoke to some of this, how that happens, but if you'd like to...
Yes, sir, so I, I, you know, we have the same, engineering department has the same concerns as the constituent does. We're, we're very concerned about setting zoning correctly, to set the, set stormwater correctly, make sure they have proper buffering, the stress on utilities, we have all those same concerns. At this point, we're setting zoning, but once we get a true set of construction drawings and we start looking at those, we'll make sure that that is, they're on compliance and that we, that we make sure that the developer does the right thing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, this hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance oh five, oh eight oh five twenty-five B?
I move to adopt ordinance oh eight oh five twenty-five B.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, move on to new business, introduce ordinance oh nine oh two twenty-five. Establish designated business parking permit program. Introduce ordinance oh nine oh two twenty-five, creating section nineteen dash twenty-three of the Enterprise Code of Ordinances and establishing a designated business parking permit program for the downtown corridor of College Street to support businesses that lack access to private parking. There will be no action taken on this, we'll vote on that at the next council meeting. Review and consider resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five D. Introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five D, providing for the issuance of a certificate of election to Casey Mack for the office of council member, District Two, for a four-year term beginning on the first Monday in November twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five D.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Review and consider resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five E. Introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five E, providing for the issuance of a certificate of election to Scotty Johnson for the office of council member, District Number Four, for a four-year term beginning the first Monday in November twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
Move to adopt resolution oh nine oh two two five E.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five F, providing for the issuance of a certificate of election to Todd Walz for the office of council member, District Number Five, for a four-year term beginning the first Monday in November twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
Move to adopt resolution oh nine oh two two five F.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Review and consider resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five G. Introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five G, providing to accept the donation of two tracts of real property consisting of approximately eleven acres currently used by Parks and Recreation and located at Zero Henderson Park and Zero Industrial Park Road from the Industrial Development Board of the City of Enterprise. Resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five G further authorizes the mayor to cause the recording of the deeds from the Industrial Development Board to the City of Enterprise and the Office of the Judge of the Probate, Coffee County, Alabama. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt resolution oh nine oh two two five G.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Review and consider resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five H. Introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five G, or, we just did that, H, providing for the authorization of an application for airport improvement funding assistance from the State of Alabama Department of Transportation. The funding will be for the purpose of undertaking a project in fiscal year twenty twenty-six to make improvements in Enterprise Municipal Airport. Resolution oh nine oh two twenty-five H further authorizes the mayor to execute the application agreement subject to an opinion from the city attorney that the city's authorized to enter into an agreement. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt resolution oh nine oh two two five H.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Authorize mayor to execute agreement. Call for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Enterprise and the Southern Alabama Regional Council on Aging, Sarcoa, to administer and operate the nutrition and transportation programs under Title III of the Older Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five as amended. Do I have a motion?
Move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Request to see, permission to seek bids for the Enterprise Rescue Life Flight Hangar. Introduce and call for the consideration of a request from City Engineer Public Works Director Barry Mott to seek bids for the construction of a new hangar for the Enterprise Rescue at Enterprise Municipal Airport. Project has been awarded a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the State of Alabama Department of Transportation to assist with the construction of the hangar. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the request to seek bids as submitted. I move to approve the request to seek bids as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. We'll now recess our regular session and convene into the E911 board meeting. The records show that all current members of the E911 board are present. Review of minutes, August 5th, 2025 meeting. A call for a motion to approve the August 5th, 2025 E911 board meeting's minutes as written.
I move to approve the E911 board meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no old business. Under new business, accounts payable A, August 2025, call for a motion to approve accounts payable A for the August 2025 in the amount of $2,419.40. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve accounts payable A for August 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. E911 board meeting is adjourned and we will reconvene into our regular session. Mayor, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by thanking our seniors for coming out today to take part in this proclamation signing. You're all such a valued part of our community and it makes me proud to see you staying active at the senior center here in our city. I would also like to congratulate Councilman Johnson on his reelection. We appreciate your continued service and I would like to give a warm welcome to Casey Mack and Todd Walls as they join the council. We're glad to have you on board and look forward to working with you. Lastly, I would like to thank our citizens who went to the polls and exercised their rights to vote. That is what keeps our community strong. The runoff election will be held on Tuesday, September 23rd at the Moose Hope Gym. All citizens will vote at this one location. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Rich?
Appreciate everyone coming out this afternoon. I want to thank Mr. Hobart for addressing us as well as Mr. Herman for commenting on his behalf, on behalf of Mr. Mitchell as well, expressing their concerns. Congratulations to our new council members, Mr. Walz and Mr. Mack and Scotty on your return to the council. Looking forward to continuing such great work with our city. Thank you all for coming.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming today also, and I would like to congratulate Todd Walz and Casey Mack on their election and look forward to them serving on the city council and glad to have Scotty reelected. It was a pitiful turnout for our election, though it's a shame that people don't come out and voice their opinion. So when we have the runoff, encourage everyone to please go vote. Thank you much.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for coming today and for the seniors especially. Thank you for the large group that we had and I know they're in the back. And thank you to all our citizens that are watching us online via YouTube. The gentleman already left, but I think it's great folks come out and learn a little bit more about their government. And I saw Barry talking with him, explaining exactly the rezone, the annexation and what we look at, I'm on the city planning, all those details that he was talking about, we'll take care of that. Casey, Todd, looking forward to sitting, I got an empty seat here, so I'm kind of lonely at this end, but looking forward to working with you all. And again, thank you for all my supporters out there. I couldn't have done it without them and I learned a lot canvassing my neighborhoods around, around the city and around my district. It really helps getting out and talking to those folks. And staff, thank you, thank you, thank you. I can't say that enough for everybody, police, fire, public works, I know I'm going to leave somebody out, but, and parks and wrecks. And if you get me certified, we can keep that pool open a little bit longer. Somebody asked me about that. I told them kids are back in school, we have to use us old people. So I'm ready to wear my Speedo and I don't think you want to see that out there. So Ms. Dawn said I couldn't say that, but I went ahead and did it. But God bless you all. Thank you and take advantage of all our city facilities out there. Wonderful. God bless.
Thank all of you for coming. Echo most of what's already been said. Congratulations to Todd Walz, Casey Mack and Scotty Johnson. And as has been said, I do wish more people would show up to vote. You know, I ran quite a bit of numbers to see what the percentages were of elected, of registered voters that showed up. In spite of the low turnout, we actually had a better percentage of voters than many of our neighboring cities, but still, I think I came up with about nineteen percent of registered voters showed up and that's a very, very small number. You live in a city, you should voice your opinion, you should show up to vote, you should be a part of the process. And I, I'm sad that more people don't take advantage of that and see the importance of it. So please do consider encouraging your friends and family that live in the city limits of Enterprise to be a part of the process. Thank you all for coming today and this meeting is adjourned.